Hey y'all, how are you this morning?
Good.
I'm Liz, I email back and forth a little bit.
Okay, thank you. We are here for a regular meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners. It is March nineteenth at eleven AM. We could all turn off cell phones. And we'll do a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited and just for all.
We have a fairly lengthy agenda, are there any changes from commissioners or staff? It seems to be.
Not that I have, none for me either.
Okay.
I'm going to approve the agenda, one second.
Excellent. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye. The agenda is approved as posted and presented. Move to community information items, I do not have any myself.
Uh, no, I don't think I have any.
Good for today.
Okay. And apologies if our alleged staff are on, I think we are not fully prepared to discuss legislative updates. We will keep doing our homework and get back to you on thoughts or positions, on our legislative tracker and other pending, pending items. So we can move right into public comments not on the agenda, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm Justin Kurtz, I work for Congresswoman Brittany Patterson in the seventh congressional district, and I'm at the office in Canyon City. Of course, we have a couple others, one in Lakewood, one in DC. But if you're down in Canyon, by all means give me a ring. I wanted just to provide a couple of updates from the Congresswoman's office largely first related to the community project funding that was approved out of the first tranche of budget approvals out of Congress and recently signed by the President last weekend. The one impacting, the two impacting Leadville in Lake County are a eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar project funding that will help install below-grade infrastructure and continue to set prep for affordable housing in Leadville. And then a, I'm gonna go dollar for, down to the dollar amount, five hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-nine dollar investment into St. Vincent Hospital surgical equipment and new, for new outpatient specialists, including in urology and spinal care. The next I'll share also is that the student resource page at the Congresswoman's official website, ederson.house.gov/students, has been launched. It's, it's got good, great information that is generated out of conversation via letter writing from the Congresswoman's office as well as some of her other congressional colleagues to the Department of Education, asking for clarity but also some correction and fixing. And thankfully, there has been some fixing on the BASSA website. Also, some of the student resource information brought out of that conversation between Congress and the Department of Education is now again on that website, ederson.house.gov/students. And then today I'll be at the Lake County Public Library Community Room between the hours of three and five, hosting mobile office hours, excuse me, where I can be of assistance to anybody who has any issues with a federal agency, be it the VA, Social Security, IRS. Yeah, if you got an issue with a federal agency, I'm happy to be of assistance where I can be. It can be the beginning of a conversation or we can, or you can, if you wanna bring your thoughts and concerns to the Congresswoman, I'm happy to hear it and transmit that to the office. And then lastly, I want to thank Tim and Liz for offering the room today. I didn't end up taking all of the offer, but nonetheless, appreciate the flexibility and willingness to operate with the staff here as usual. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, I really appreciate you coming up in person and especially the office hours. I mean, of course, it's great to talk to us, but really appreciate the service to the, to the community and paying attention to our county with the CDS amounts, that's great. I mean, especially affordable housing, as you, I mean, as you know and appreciate your boss aligning this forward. Like, any money we can get to help move affordable housing is critical for this community, so thank you. You have any?
No, great, thank you.
Any other public comment in the room or seeing in the room, so online? Olden? No. Okay. So we can move on to the regular agenda items. So agenda item number one is an update on the Leadville Fly Yard and Excel Summer of 2024 Work Plans led by Blair.
Hi.
Hey.
Um, I'm gonna give you a quick update on the Fly Yard and what's happening with the substation. I'm gonna give you some updates on some other things, but I really just wanted the opportunity to come and introduce myself in person. My name's Blair McGary. I have been in this position since October first, taking the role from Nathan Steele, as you guys know. I live over in Silverthorne, I've been in Summit County for about twenty years. I'm very familiar with your community, excuse me, with your community and what you have going on, but I'm really excited to learn more and get more involved. I really wanna be a face here. I love the drive over, I was gorgeous this morning. And again, I can be here in, you know, thirty minutes and would like to be. So I'm gonna leave some cards right here, please feel free to pick it up and please feel free to reach out, please be in touch. I think it's really important to start this conversation by noting that I do not come from a background in utilities. I am a community builder, I worked for the town of Silverthorne for about fifteen years doing marketing, economic development events. My claim to fame, love it or hate it, is I brought First Fridays to Silverthorne, then went and did three years as the Director of their Chamber and then took this position. So here I am, and again, very mountain-centric, I don't have the city shoes, is what they joke with me. All right, so I wanna talk to you guys about a few things today. We'll start with the Leadville Substation. As the Chairman mentioned, we are rebuilding two single-circuit, one hundred and fifteen kilowatt transmission lines that emanate from that substation. That, they're about sixty years old, it's just time for replacement. What that is going to require is we're going to be flying some helicopters out of both the Leadville Yard as well as the Birdside Yard. I think we're still going through the process for the TUP for the Birdside Yard, we do have approval for the Leadville Yard. We're looking at two, I believe, two five-day periods of flying, avoiding the Mineral Belt Trail as much as possible. However, we will have to cross it a few times and we will have people stationed out there kind of stopping traffic recreation as that helicopter is flying for safety purposes, things like that, over the trail. We will also avoid that events, obviously, we've been working really closely to make sure that we're not impacting that at all. But yes, we will be out there, it's just easier to fly those helicopters and build roads and all of that good stuff. So thank you for that, we really appreciate it and we're excited to get that project done. I wanna pause, any questions there?
Just remind us, is this gonna be work seven days a week? I'm just thinking about the events too and all that and the timeframe.
It depends on the schedule. If we can fly, if we can, I think our permit only allows for two five-day periods. I don't think we are allowed to fly for seven days straight. I think you'll see work happening, not helicopters flying.
Gotcha.
I think the way that your event calendar lines up, and apologies, I don't have it off the top of my head, but you guys block it on the weekends, you really, we really don't have an opportunity to fly over the weekends at all. And our crews don't, don't work too hard.
I'm just really particularly concerned about the burrow race. Making them crazy.
We'll make sure that we're nowhere near burrow race, I promise. No, that's, thank you for noting that, I really appreciate it. It's good to know, like, what are the red flags, you know? Anything else there?
No, thank you, not for me.
Not for me either.
I, well, I just say, thanks for coming up in person and yeah, like, definitely take you up on your offer for like, like a longer discussion about sort of some other community stuff. And in particular, just to flag it and I'll follow up with, in, in an email. But curious, like, if there's like a longer-term work plan that's already laid out for continuing to upgrade, like the distribution grid in the area?
Do you mind if I take a little bit more of your time? You guys can kick me out at any point, but.
You're welcome to sit up here too.
Yeah, I don't mind standing at all. All right, so gas infrastructure project is continuing in Leadville. We are going to start, most of the work is going to be on the southern portion near the historic district. There is going to be a small area on the north end of town near Tenth Street where we're completing work from last year. But yes, we will definitely be there and impactful in those ways. We plan to come to your community, bring up all of the experts that can talk really knowledgeably about these projects at, in mid-April to really host some town halls, get the mailers out. We are going to be very, notify people in a lot of different ways. We plan to have newspaper ads right before the helicopters fly so that people know the weeks that that's going to happen. We, we, I, I hope that we are obnoxiously communicated. That's my goal.
Yeah.
But yes, we will be back up to continue those conversations with you in more detail and with your community, community members. Okay, Commissioner March, this one's for you. Wildfire mitigation, we are, we, and I guess it was rolled out in 2021, a wildfire mitigation pilot program. And what that essentially did, it was called the Enhanced Power Safety Settings. And so what happens is if a branch falls on a line, a squirrel runs across the line, right now we've got reclosures, so it's going to automatically reclose and it's gonna automatically re-energize that line. We saw what just happened down in the Panhandle of Texas. We're concerned, that's a safety concern for us. So when we have fire danger in high, or higher levels, we're going to enact this Enhanced Power Safety Settings. And what it does is when something hits that line, it de-energizes the line in a tenth of a second. That's a little bit faster than normal and it does not automatically re-energize the line. It requires us to send a crew out to actually inspect the line and ensure that there is not anything on top of it that will ignite it. What that means, I mean, obviously, it's one hundred percent a safety precaution, but what that means is extended outages. We, we're not gonna just turn it back on because we don't know what's on that line. Sometimes that's people on foot walking out there, sometimes we can send aerial crews. Sometimes they're, you know, in a car, but it, that, that depends on, you know, the outage time, if you will. That was a pilot program and it is now being extended across the state. So again, something that the community should be prepared for. Again, pick up one of my cards, if you experience an outage and you're like, is this because of fire, high wildfire danger? Call me and I'll be able to tell you, we can have this, that effect communication. We know when it's happening, you know, again, when it's level high or above, we're pretty much enacting that these days. I know that I owe you some GIS and shape files and we are, I promise I'm working through it. We've had a little bit of a switch where they want us to go through an Archer request, basically a public records request, which is going to take, you know, longer than we want. And so I'm trying to go work around that.
Well, yeah, well, let's connect, because we might be able to create those quicker, I think it was just efficiency. And if you have them, share.
Perfect, yes, I would love to come back up in one-on-one with you guys. Absolutely. All right, really quickly, I'm gonna pause there, any wildfire mitigation questions?
None for me, thank you.
Gas infrastructure, I feel like I didn't pause there.
I'm just, uh, just, yeah, we should connect to getting out on the ground on Counter Row Four and Seventeen to take a look at those lines and one of those rightaways and the work that we're trying, some of the work we're looking at on Counter Row Seventeen with Team Rubicon in July. And for all intents and purposes to avoid the power line areas, but how can we work together to address those easements? That would be kind of a huge, huge win in just having the conversation, so.
I would love that, and I would also love a tour of the community. If anybody's willing to take that time and drive around with me and kind of just point things out. Again, I feel like I'm familiar with the area, but like, hey, that, that's this neighborhood. And so that when we're talking about it in the future, I'm pretty aware.
Yeah, absolutely.
Awesome, thank you. All right, Mountain Energy System, I'll just touch on this one really quickly, not take up too much of your time. As we all know, there is a gas capacity restraint on the Mountain Energy System. Excel Energy plans to take a proposal to the Public Utility Commission in the coming months, probably as early as June. It will be a hybrid proposal. This is a little bit different and a little bit outside of any of the proposals that we've put forth. When I say a hybrid approach, we understand that there are a number of families and homes and people and buildings that are still very reliant on natural gas. So we're looking at a twelve million dollar, an overall eighty million dollar proposal. Twelve million of that would go to a module gas infrastructure project, so not permanent, I think fifteen years. It kind of infuses down into our current system and reinforces. It's tanks, it's big propane tanks, it's not the three hundred million permanent hub and spoke investment. In addition to that investment in natural gas, there is about a forty-seven million dollar portfolio for NPAs. NPAs is a non-pipeline alternative. Think heat pumps, beneficial electrification incentives. So Excel coming in and incentivizing customers, probably up to a hundred percent, perhaps higher, to convert to electric. That is to try to alleviate pressure off of that natural gas system. The remaining bit of that eighty million would be an investment in electrical infrastructure upgrades. I will be coming to you guys in the coming months, once this is filed, definitely talking to you in more detail, giving you the nuts and bolts, having the scientists come up and looking for letters of support on that project. We feel like it is very innovative, we feel like it hits the needs of some of our neighbors that are really pushing to get away from natural gas while still giving our customers the option. So we're pretty excited about it. Questions there? Again, I'll pause. I'll move to.
Yeah, I think it's great, I mean, I'd love to hear a question. I guess, I guess one question, I, I mean, it's probably woven in, into this and the details, but I think something that's come up is, like, some houses or parts of our community have tried to put in heat pumps or gone all electric is like, how do you ensure the resilience? Like, do you take like a sort of small microgrid approach? Or do you like keep the existing gas infrastructure in there as a backup? So just thinking through that, you know, if there is an outage and it's the middle of winter and you're relying on electric heat, how do you sort of keep that resilience and backup for those homes that are going electric?
It's very important, because the tech, as the technology changes, that's going to change, right?
Yeah.
I think that right now, you know, the dual-source heat pumps really is where most people are, but that could change in the coming years and that's what we hope that that NPA incentive will do for folks.
Yeah.
But you're right, it's very tied into those details and where technology moves us in the coming years.
Sorry if you mentioned it and I missed it, where, do you have kind of areas of the state that you're focusing? Is the eighty million for Colorado alone and do you have areas of the state that you're prioritizing?
Eighty million is for our mountain communities, so Lake County, Summit County, Breckenridge. Breckenridge is the big natural gas user, Grand County is also a large target of this.
Do you know if it goes into Eagle as well, or is it stop it?
Eagle a little bit, we only serve gas in Vale and Avon and then Minterne and Redcliffe. But we do not provide electricity or electric to Vale or Avon, just Redcliffe and Minterne. So we really are focusing more on you guys and Summit.
Okay.
Yeah, and Grand, Grand's definitely a large part of it. Um, the last thing I'll mention, again, don't wanna move too quick. Red Truck, this is a new resource that we have that we're excited about. It stands for Resources Education Delivered. It is a red truck that we drive up to your community. We feel like it's really important that we come to communities and provide resources, rebates, how can you pay your bill? How can you get rebates for solar, things like that? We, we wanna be in your, physically in your community rather than, you know, hey, here's this arbitrary website that's really corporate and you have to dig through a hundred different things to fix that stuff. We wanna be face-to-face with people. So we found that these, this red truck really works well at resource fairs, things like that. We will bring it to certain events, but again, it really is more effective when we bring it to those resource events. So I can work with staff, but if there's anything that you guys, that comes to your mind that is just like, that's a great fit, we really would like to be physically in front of people rather than not.
Sure.
Are you, are you in touch already with Cloud City Conservation Center?
Yes, actually, I have a meeting next week with both Emily and John McMurtney from the Lake County Foundation, so.
Excellent, yeah, because I think they might have a calendar of events that sort of work with what you're saying.
Those are the big updates that I have for you all, anything for me that I didn't touch on?
Nothing.
I don't think so.
I would really love to come up and buy you lunch, coffee, happy hour, Tim and I will get it set up. But yeah, um, thank you again for having me, I really appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Blair. Okay. Agenda item number two, presentation from the Farm Service, updating progress on the Tennessee Creek Project.
Do you have a present, a presentation to share?
Yeah, it's an empowerment.
Okay. Right here.
Yep.
Awesome.
So first, thanks everybody for your time. And secondly, I'm using my phone, my apologies, that's where my notes are. Just real quick here, I wanna provide a little bit of background on the, the couple of projects that are really relevant to Lake County. And just for a little bit more background too, that if, if you weren't already aware, National Forest System lands in Lake County are seventy percent of the county land base. So it's pretty significant when we try to build in management to those lands to achieve a number of different things, because of Forest Service Multi-Use Agency. So this, these two projects I'm gonna speak about, and Lisa will expound on here, I'm Pat Verser, by the way, District Ranger, I'm the District Ranger. The two projects I'm speaking about will, I really started out sometime ago, almost fifteen years ago, I'd say. Tennessee Creek Project got built, which is a, it's a vegetation, forest health project, habitat improvement project, was designed some time ago and through, through the years, it's finally got to a decision point and we're able to start doing things associated with the project, which is quite a large one. It's primarily covering, you know, areas around turquoise, areas east of Skeet Cooper, and then also into the Half Moon Drainage. So that's like the general project footprint. The other project is Twin Lakes, which is actually currently under analysis in the NEPA world, National Environmental Policy Act, if you're not familiar. One of the, one of the processes we follow to get a project hopefully on the ground, Twin Lakes sake. But I'm gonna back up to say that the vision for how the Leadville Ranger District is trying to manage National Forest System lands here was, was based around and is based around initially protecting watersheds. And in this case, municipal water bodies, turquoise and twin lakes in particular. And that's really based on, you know, the, the public that those serve as well as the, the local benefit to treating those areas as well for forest health reasons or habitat improvement reasons, plus the benefit that downstream users derive from the treatments. So this is kind of just a quick map to show you where Tennessee Creek is here, sort of the northern two-thirds of that map and then Twin Lakes Project that's being analyzed now, as I mentioned, in the southern part of the district. But that's, that's our approach, is municipal watershed protection, local community mitigation, forest health benefits, and then also the other benefits that can be derived from that in terms of potentially fuel mitigation. So Lake County, you know, as many of you know, probably just a couple of years ago, approved and worked on a community wealth architecture plan. It was an update done to a prior plan. And a lot of the areas, in the pink areas on this map, actually overlap with those priority areas of treatment from that CWPP update. And then beyond that, there are other areas from that CWPP that we're gonna be looking for in the future to, to try to address that are highest priority for the local values at risk and those high, high-risk values and assets that are out there on the ground, which are not pictured here, but I bet a lot of you know what those things are that, that are really important to the community of, of Lake County and everyone who, who lives here. So with that, I would say, you know, we, we do have, it's probably no surprise, there are some challenges with treating vegetation here. Some of those are obvious, some of them are less obvious. It's also because the, the product, if you will, the vegetation itself, those trees that are out there on the ground don't have a super-high market value, so it is very expensive to treat. So that all, that all affects the rate of implementation for a project area. So I'm, I'm gonna turn it over to my esteemed colleague Lisa here to cover what has been treated in Tennessee Creek and, and also to share with you some of the plans for the possible treatments there, south, on the south shore of Twin Lakes and get into a little bit more of the details. So Lisa, thanks.
Lisa, do you wanna just tell me one to?
Yes, I can do that. And you can go ahead and go to the next lead.
Okay.
So my name is Lisa Corbin, I manage the Timber and Vegetation Program for all of the San Isabel, so Leadville, Lake County, or Leadville and Lake County, Salida and Chayka County and then down further south to San Carlos for us. Tennessee Creek got signed in two thousand and twelve, we were in litigation until two thousand and fourteen. We started implementing heavily in two thousand and eighteen. And so the green areas on the map are those that we got finished, they're complete, they're the ones that you can see right now as you go out to Turquoise Lake. We have three projects currently under contract and they are the ones that are on the northern part and the eastern part of the lake, going kind of from, kind of the west side around to the east side. We've got Mosquito View, St. Kevin and Printer Boy, those are the names of the three contracts. The plan is to have all three active this year. With, I believe, Mosquito View starting first and St. Kevin coming online second, Printer Boy would be last because it has some restrictions to it. They, all contractors are well aware of the events we have around the lake. There is a restriction for all of them for hauling, which is a weekend and holiday restriction. So it goes in place from noon on Friday and it usually ends on Monday, if it's not a holiday, at about eight AM. They can continue to work on their units, they just cannot haul. With the exception of Printer Boy, because it is directly around a campground, it will not have activities until after Labor Day. So that's why it's under a different timeframe for that one. We do have two contracts that are gonna go into place this summer. With implementation scheduled to start probably next year would be my guess. This is below, this is Sugarloaf, it's below the dam. And that one, we do have a restriction on it that they can't start until after Labor Day on that one too, mainly due to the high recreation use in that area. And then the other one down south is Half Moon. This one we're doing in cooperation with Arwick, they have the NRD grant. And so we're putting an agreement together right now with them, so they will be taking the lead on that, but we will be working with them cooperatively on that project. Next slide, please.
Actually, can I ask you a quick question on, that's a big area in Half Moon, is that, you think, is that, is it gonna get thinned less or, or just a big group? It's like a big project.
So the active polygons, the ones that are actually going to get cut are the ones that are colored.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
So the bigger boundaries kind of incorporating everything, and then those colored polygons are the ones getting cut. And so it's going to turn out into a good mosaic. And basically, we captured everything in Half Moon that we thought we could go after. You know, so this is going to be the only contract in there. And it's about 301 acres out there. I am going to throw out that we're going to look at possibly closing that road when implementation starts, because recreation traffic and log trucks do not mix well, and especially on that road where it gets really tight. So that's one of our considerations. When we know when the contract's going to be awarded and when it's going to start, we're going to have more communication with you guys, updating you on that to let you know when that's going to occur.
Sure.
Ask you a question, Lisa. We have that BOR, the kind of preseason meeting regarding water levels and whatnot. Are you all, during that meeting, it's typically a question, and if the concessionaire is present, you know, let's extend the season and have campgrounds open another two weeks. Just want to put that on the radar, because I'm sure you guys will be discussing with the concessionaire, how, how long that season is, and if that's coordinating that with the contractor, so that, you know, one group doesn't decide or push for one thing.
Yeah, we work with the concessionaire under the, the terms of the permit that they have to operate around the lake. And, and if, if there's viability there, and it, and it meets a public need at the same time, then, you know, we'll certainly talk about that, and as well as with, you know, those other partners and agencies that are, that are involved in the area, so.
There's a little flexibility still, there's not kind of hard dates set, but just.
The concessionaire is pretty set mainly based on some of the, the prep work that goes into them, you know, campgrounds, and, you know, especially as it relates to prepping water systems.
Yeah.
And then even the accessibility of those campgrounds, based on what snows there, what's not in certain ones. So most of the dates are mostly set up, but I wouldn't say that it would be out of the question, if there's flexibility that can be provided, but they hold the permit, and we do lean on them for their input.
Okay.
So, you know, we can have conversations.
There's usually that conversation for end of the season, to like, extend it a couple of weeks or something, I don't know.
And typically, we've extended the ones that we've already done work around, those campgrounds there. And we haven't seen big conflicts when it comes to hauling on Turquoise, when we get into the fall season.
Okay.
The traffic there decreases enough.
Yeah.
That folks are pretty good. It's the height of summer season that gets a little bit worrying.
Sure.
With that being said, we will be hauling, you know, off of these two other ones, and probably coming out towards Leadville Junction with those during summer season, based off of when they start operations. And some of this is based off of the contractor talking to us when they're going to start.
Ready for the next?
Yep. See if I missed anything off of this one. Nope, we can go to the next one. Okay. So this is Twin Lakes. We are currently working on the NEPA for this one. We are scheduled to go out for our objection period. So we have two periods where we do comments. We have our scoping period, which we did on this one about two years ago. And then as a final, or a follow-up to that one, we do the objection period. And so we'll have the completed BA, a draft decision, that we will send out to those folks who commented to us about this project, we'll send that information out to them. And that's going to, that's scheduled to start here probably in the next month or so, that we're going to do that. Once we get through that process, if we have no objections, then we are able to move forward with, Pat signing a decision. And after that, we can start implementation. If we do get objections, then we're delayed a little bit, we have to go through our objection process, which takes about 45 days. And then if we are found that everything, our analysis is correct, then we can sign it after that 45-day period, if there's nothing outstanding that we need to deal with objections. For us, this project has multiple different things going with it that just makes it a challenge. I don't know if you guys have driven up the 399 Road any time in the last oh, five, 10 years. It gets worse every year, I've driven on it, there are some really tight switchbacks on it, especially on the BLM section, there are some really big potholes that you can put your truck into and never see it again. So there's going to be some roadwork that we need to do. We've identified issues with the tight switchbacks under this environmental assessment, so hopefully we can do some work to be able, to make that a little bit better, to be able to get equipment up there to do the work. We also have the Colorado, let's see, Continental Divide National Scenic Trail that goes through this project, and it comes with some visual restrictions that we need to pay attention to when we do vegetation management. And then we also recognize that we have Highway 82, that's a scenic resource, or people see the area. So we're keeping that in mind as we build those projects. On this map, the green areas are those that we're looking to treat, the purple areas are those that are no treatments. And then we are also looking at doing some kind of watershed restoration, the two lines on here, the one that's yellow and the one that are orange, they're old ditches. And currently, those ditches are blocking the natural flow of some of our creeks, and so we're looking to breach those ditches under this decision, and allow those creeks to run in their natural course. And so that's why some of this is, kept this in the project area on the far end, is to be able to do that with those ditches.
Is the no vegetation treatment, just because it gets steeper there, or too far in the road, or all the things?
Yeah.
Yeah, all the things.
We're using two admin roads, administrative roads, there are these orange roads that you see on here, it's also a ditch line. And so we're going to be using those, reaping those for when we do implementation. And so that'll get us a little bit further into some of those locations, but the terrain does get pretty steep off of this ditch right here. There's a place when you stand on it, it goes vertical on it, you're not getting equipment over down from that standpoint. We are looking to utilize cut-to-length equipment, so this equipment can grow onto slopes up to 60% when it's tethered, so it's winch assist. And so we'll be utilizing that, and we've analyzed for that under this environmental assessment. So that'll allow us to treat some trains that we haven't treated in the past, you've been up an overmonarch pass, that's the equipment that we've used there.
Okay.
Very challenging area, those, you might guess. Access is limited, topography is very challenging. So, but in terms of where this is happening, and location-wise, we're, we're hitting the areas immediately adjacent to the water bodies themselves.
Are you getting round table or CWCV when you need support?
Not at this point. There are, is it, is it, might not be a surprise, there are utility providers that are interested in both, both treatment areas, you know, Turquoise and Twin Lakes, when it becomes available, or if it becomes available.
Next one?
Yep, and I think, make sure this is, make sure I cover everything on it. So our final decision is expected around June 2024. It's a little bit flexible, but, and then implementation, we're looking at 25. So it wouldn't, we wouldn't start anything out there until next year.
Out in Twin Lakes?
At Twin Lakes.
And then also the second round of contractors for below the dam?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Will probably be in 2024.
And Half Moon.
Yeah. And with all of the contracts that we have, we allow them usually two to three years for implementation. And that's based off of the short window that we have up here for doing that, because if it's too wet, too snowy, and all the things that come in up here, it restricts how much we have to do.
Okay.
It's possible we can see operations around Turquoise too, in addition.
Next one?
Okay, that should be it. Any questions?
I just want to, thank you for coming. And also, you know, Pat and I have had this conversation, you know, I, I think at some point you and I connected last year, and we're like, this is, we're close, like, this is happening, we're close, and I started spreading, we're, this is like, thinking that it was this season, so. Like, okay, I have to remember the, you know, pace of, you know, the, the organization. So I just offer like, that's always helpful to reiterate to us and the community. And looking ahead, although I don't know if this is even part of the conversation yet, and I, I keep bugging you about this, in the northern part of the county, that Tennessee Creek project, I mean, what, what is the potential in that being addressed and, and, because it's scoped with the NEPA, right?
And you're thinking around Sylvan Lakes, Webster's?
Yes, yeah, Honey Run and.
So one of the things that we've had in our favor working around the reservoirs is we've got a funding stream. So the utilities we've had, so around Turquoise, we've had Colorado Springs Utilities, Aurora, Buffalo, and even BOR kicking in funding for those. And so that helps drive where we can implement, when you actually have that funding coming in. And so as we move into those other areas and we get further away from the reservoir, we have to look for those funding streams and see what we can come up with. And also, one of our challenges we're having this year, we have a project down south in our San Carlos district that we've put into place, it's about 200 acres, we've laid it all out, it's ready to go. The price tag for it's about half million dollars, and we're still struggling to get money for it, because there's nothing, you know, other than Forest Service allocated dollars, we don't have any partners coming to the table, we don't have any other sort of outside funding. And so that's the part that we start looking for when we look at these other areas, is what kind of funding can we get? Because a lot of times, if I can find partner funding, I can match it with Forest Service allocated dollars, because they like to see those partnerships. It's when I have to fund something holistically out of Forest Service dollars that it gets challenging. And so if there is a mechanism, or if there's funding available, we can start looking at, that'll help with those projects. I will also mention, they are tough areas to work in. We have looked at them in the past, they are super rocky. And we do have some challenges when it comes to access on those, and that's just getting, like, access agreements with Webster's to be able to utilize their roads and through their properties, to be able to get to some of these areas. And so it just, there's more to them than some of the work we've been doing around Turquoise.
Yeah. Can I ask a question on that code? Not promising anything, but does it, does it matter from, like, the approvals you have to get, where that partner funding is coming from? Does it matter if it's like nonprofit, or local government, or businesses, or like a dedicated sales tax, like, it doesn't matter as long as it's there?
How we got into partnership with Arwick initially, down in Chaypee County, is we stood up the, the project up on Monarch Pass, and we had all of those funding streams, and Arwick ended up being our financial entity, where they could take in all of those monies and be able to track them and do what was needed and to spend them. And they ended up being the ones that held the contract with it and everything too. So, and the agreement that I've set up with Arwick currently is broad-based, it's not focused solely on Half Moon Creek. I've made it so that it's both Lake County and Chaypee County wide, and that way, the idea is that we have more projects out there, we don't know what they are yet, but we can use that agreement to utilize them, and that would be where I would bring them in.
Okay.
Yeah, and it, and it has been functioning here even in the past few years, where National Forest Foundation, which is congressionally chartered organization, assists the Forest Service, and their mission has stepped up in that same or similar role as what Arwick has. So it, it facilitates things quite a bit. So the other thing I was going to mention too, is that, I don't know that there's total awareness across the community, or maybe even the entire state, that, the, the trees don't sell themselves, right? Some places, trees do do that, you know, but it is not a market-driven implementation process, where this product, these trees are in high demand. And so without that, we have these, you know, a lot of costs for these treatments I mentioned. I mentioned that, we spoke to half a million dollars for, you know, a couple of, a couple hundred acres down south. That's typical price tag on the treatments, on the average. So if there were an ability to, if there were markets available that could maybe utilize these products a little bit more effectively, that might actually drive a faster rate of implementation.
How, what is any said goal of offsetting those costs with industry revenues, or what you might be able to get, like, what's something that's typical from the sale?
Oh, from a, from a traditional timber sale?
Yeah, yeah. When it's part of the variable in the formula of doing a project.
Lisa knows, yeah, more about that, where, where it has applied.
And, and we do apply it, so all of our contracts are what we term "storage ship" agreements. And so the contractor who gets them actually pays for the value of the timber, and that value is used to offset some of the work. I think up here for most of our contracts, that typical value right now is between $10,000 and $12,000 for the value of the wood. So, and they are taking it, so we do a couple of things with the wood. There's interest in it being shipped and going over to Gypsum, so that's been in play, we've heard people talk about that one. I think the last contracts we had, we had up here, the wood went to six different mills throughout the state, it was all whoever was needing it. And then we do plan to deck the ensole, which is what we turn into firewood. And when we did that last time, it took two years for all that firewood to disappear. So I have a feeling if we deck it, people will come and it will go away. That part I don't worry about.
I had a question on NEPA, I'm not, I don't have a ton of experience weighing in on NEPA, but would it be helpful for Lake, Lake County or local partners to weigh in positively with comments on that? Does that, I, I just don't know, like, what makes the difference?
We've, we've been in a lot of discussions with the county over time on the value of forest treatments. I think if, if, if that's, if that's something that you would like to do, we always appreciate support versus detraction. So I, I think that, that would be up to the commissioners to do that. But I think on, in terms of how we align on the need to treat across the landscape for a variety of reasons, we've, yeah, that's pretty well established.
Okay, I mean, yeah, as one, yeah, I guess that was the question there, it's like whether having the recent CWPP and clear active, you know, partners was plenty to point to.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, we always appreciate positive words, I won't say that.
That's not most of what you got on NEPA?
Not always, there are other aspects.
But we only get compliments.
Tell us how that's done.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks for your partnership, and yeah, lots, lots of things happening, so. Congrats on the progress, coming 15-plus-year process.
We do plan on having a press release go out before implementation starts, just to notify the public, so that it's going out. I just want to make sure it's timely and doesn't come out too early, because I know people tend to forget about this. But that's true.
Yeah, happy, happy to mention also here in this forum, and wherever we can continue to educate folks.
Yeah, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah.
Cool.
Okay. Moving on, agenda item number three, discussion and consideration of a DOLA grant to fund the Lake County Community Facility Feasibility Study. Have Brenna as the lead.
I'm here.
Fantastic. You have, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I think all of the, the contracts have been reviewed by, by Chris's office, and I think we're ready to go on that. Chris, is there anything else, thumbs up? Okay, yeah, I think we're ready to go, I don't think there's anything pending regarding DOLA. Are there any questions?
No, this was a, the, we got the full request, was that 186?
No, no, it was like 100, I want to say 117, I think, is the total.
That's 50% of the bid that we wanted to cover.
Yep, excellent. Well, thanks for your work on that, Catherine.
We know.
Yeah.
Yeah, big shout out to Catherine for her work on that.
No, I don't have any questions.
So what, so do we need to approve, accept, acknowledge?
That would be Chris, yeah.
Yeah. So this is DOLA's move to what they call a self-activating grant agreement, meaning that when you accept the money and you take it, you've accepted all their terms and conditions, so there's no standoff and stuff, so yeah, it would just be your approval to go on and accept the grant funds.
Okay.
I'll move to approve and accept the Department of Local Affairs or DOLA grants, grant funding for the Lake County Community Facility feasibility. uh grant funding uh for the Lake County Community Facility Feasibility Study.
I'll second.
No thing for, for me.
Nothing for me either.
I'll just say, this is maybe on me, but I could use like a refresher on like what the scope, not right now, but like uh i- i- if there's like the cheat sheet on what the scope of the work is gonna be and like the timeline, that'd be great to slip that.
Yeah, yeah.
Re-educate myself. Brenna, everyone's nodding in the room, so I think, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I can create like, uh, because it is a large document, so I can pull out some of the, you know, the timeline, the scope of work and, and package that up for you. So it's easy to digest for you.
Yeah, yeah, because I think now that, I think I'm starting to get like a few questions about like, what's going on with that? So that'd be great to, to know the Safeway level answer.
Yep, yeah, I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, call for a vote on the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Uh, so that is accepted and approved. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, thanks you guys.
Agenda item number four, discussion and consideration of a PSC, PSA with OLC for a community-centered feasibility study.
So we, we, there's still a couple of things that we need to hammer out on the, the contract. They came back, Bob, who's our contact at OLC, came back with a couple of questions, as did their attorney. So I asked Melissa to respond to that because there are legal questions that I can't answer. So um, I don't think that we can, um, I don't think that you all can vote on that yet because I think we're still hammering out the details on that.
Well, but I thought it was my, I, I, I don't see anything that's going to be like a deal breaker. So I think at this point, my recommendation would be to go in and approve the PSA pending final legal review. So we can keep it moving.
Do we know, Brenna, are you concerned that there's like a change in scope or?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I didn't get that impression. That's why I was gonna say if there was an update on that.
Yeah, there.
It's not even a deal breaker.
It, it's, it was just something about, uh, it was something about insurance. And, and it sounded like Bob was saying that, that it's the, um, that there's something contradicting one of the things. Uh, again, I don't quite understand it because it's with insurance and so I don't, I don't. But um, I can forward, do you want me to forward it to you right now, Chris?
No, no, I think I, we've got it. I think we already looked at those and I think it was just the clarification as to the types of insurance and that type of thing.
Yeah, and just for timeline, you received this information yesterday, Brenna? Uh, I rece- I received the response from Bob this morning. Okay, yeah. We'll work it out, but like Chris said, I would second approving it pending final legal review because we're very close. Okay. I would, I would love that. I think, yeah, I think Adam and I would both really appreciate that.
Yeah, I thought it was just insurance-related questions and stuff. I haven't seen what you received this morning though, so.
It had to do with like the level of indemnification that they were comfortable with, so.
And I think, was that the one we're going back to, the, the level of insurance? So I think, is that the one where? Yes, it, so typically when we get, like, a contractor doesn't want to have the full blanket, uh, one of the compromises we'll recommend is that they indemnify to the level of applicable insurance. So as long as they can provide us with insurance certificates showing that they're carrying the insurance that would likely cover, and this is a feasibility study, we're not actually building something. So I'm a little more comfortable with that type of approach with this contract than I would be if we were engaged in a contractor actually building a facility.
Okay, all right, I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And I mean, it is pending legal review, so if something comes up, we can bring it back.
It can always come back to you. Yeah, if it ends up being something else and like Catherine was a little, if there does end up being some sort of issue with the scope or the price that they quoted and stuff, we can always bring it back to you.
Okay.
Um, I'll, I'll move to approve the professional service agreement with OLC for the community-centered feasibility study, pending legal review and barring there's no significant changes to the scope and nor change in price.
I'll second.
Great.
I'll second.
No questions? Okay, look for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Uh, that PSA with OLC is approved. Uh, for the motion pending legal review. All right.
Great, thanks you guys.
Thank you.
Do, um, anything else or can I step off?
No, you're good.
Good, thank you.
Okay, thanks you all.
Okay, uh, agenda item number five, discussion and consideration of Resolution twenty-two-four oh eight, adopting a Lake County caregiver leave policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll share the screen also.
Thank you.
Yeah. Is it this one?
Yes, I believe so.
There we go.
Perfect.
Okay, tell me what you'd like me to do.
Yeah, if you just scroll to the second page for me.
Okay.
That is where the policy starts.
Okay.
So under this policy that I'm proposing, all um, full-time and three-quarter time employees would have eighty hours of paid caregiver leave that they can use when an employee is an immediate family member, is ill or injured, and um, they have to provide care to that family member or attention or bring them to the doctor, that sort of a thing. Um, it would be eighty hours per calendar year. The definitions for ill and injured are here. And then immediate family member is also defined here as well. Do we have some more questions?
No, I think we've talked about this. I think there aren't many questions.
Okay. Yeah, and the idea of this is that it would run congruently with FMLA. Um, I think it's a really great benefit that like these people are already taking the time off, but it's just the reassurance that they have a paycheck at the end of the day, so.
Okay. Cool.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you, Zoe. No questions for me?
Yeah, none for me?
None for me either. Um, and I think we approved this as the resolution, right, Chris?
Yes, yeah.
Oh, wait, is this the correct?
Yeah.
I've checked like nine times.
Pretty sure.
I know, excellent.
Yes, this is one of my greatest fears.
I'll move to approve uh Resolution twenty-four dash zero eight, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Lake County, Colorado, to approve a caregiver leave policy.
I'll second.
Excellent.
No further discussion from me.
None for me, Ag.
Okay, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye? Uh, Resolution twenty-two-four oh eight is adopted. Thank you.
Zoe, yeah.
Celebration party later.
Don't get hurt.
Yeah. It's okay, now you can. Agenda item number six, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Patricia Wooden for consulting services with Lake County Sheriff's Office. And Sheriff's backman is here.
Thank you.
All yours.
Still good morning, still good morning, everyone. Just a refresher real quick, because we're thoroughly engaged with Patricia Wooden prior to my arrival, and she did a great job preparing me and preparing Sheriff's Office and, and recovery aspects. And uh, she's continued to stay engaged with me, just uh, you know, always offered help for whatever was needed. And uh, we're, we're finding as we're working through the development of our organization, um, some holes still. And, and primarily those are found through just lack of experience overall. We have a young crew, new leadership, and we also have, you know, holding people accountable or sending people through an internal affairs investigation process that we've been handling internally. I don't think we'll ever be big enough as a county or an agency to say we have a whole internal affairs investigation unit, uh, which a lot of large agencies do, and the point of that is to separate them from the office so if they have to see things with fresh eyes, they're able to do so. So I think with a county our size, I think it's appropriate to bring somebody in from the outside to help with our internal affairs investigations, which she has helped us in the past and uh, has actually developed our process. So she's pretty familiar with it. She's pretty familiar with our policies, again, has helped to develop that process. She also brings in, in close to forty years into the industry, um, so the value of her experience is great. She has worked herself up to commanding whole entire divisions with one of the largest sheriff's offices in the state of Colorado. So she has a lot of experience in the development process also, um, not only from her own personal experience but from developing others, and that's what we need here also. So that's the main point of this agreement is to engage in those types of services that can help develop our staff from a leadership and management standpoint, decision-making, problem-solving, all the things that we're trying to work on in our development, uh, but then also to be able to be, uh, do our internal affairs investigations from the start to finish, for that, so she can provide that information to me for decision-making on the outcome of those internal affairs. So that's the main point of this. The uh timeframe we're looking to start will be April first, it'll be a year contract. And um, she's gracious enough to offer her services at fifty dollars an hour, which has cut her cost per hour in half from where her original service was with us. And she chose that rate because she truly just wants to try and help us as much as possible. So I think that's um below what she's valued, but that was, she was insisted on that price. Um, do you guys have any questions that I can answer?
I guess my only question will be, has um, has Wooden reviewed the PSA? I think we did the draft PSA board, sent it over to her. Have we got anything back from her yet?
Uh, no, so that was my delay. Um, Liz bribed me with bonus points that I failed to see to get this signed by her this morning, so my apologies. I was hoping for a bonus point.
Denied.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that's, that would be the only thing is we're just waiting to get the signature back. So I would just suggest that approve pending final legal signature by the contractor.
And she has offered, you know, to work electronically as much as possible to save on the travel. So it will reduce the need for her being here in person as much as possible. Which she'll, she'll be saving on drive time also, but um, yeah, so it's either or, whether it's in person or virtual. We'll try to do the virtual side as much as possible.
I, I don't have any questions, but I would like to comment if I may.
Please.
Yeah. I just wanna, I, yeah, Patricia has been a huge part of your taking over the office and your coming to your position in the office, I suppose. And I think she's, it seems that she's done a great job and I just want to thank you also for being so communicative with us and coming to these meetings and laying that out uh with good explanation for the knowledge of the public, for continuing to check in with us one-on-one um on the regular. That's much appreciated and doesn't go unnoticed, um, as well as I know you take the time to meet with our, the county manager. So just appreciate that as a peer and another elected. Giving your time and, and understanding the importance of keeping up that communication and, and giving those explanations and answering to the public, so appreciate it.
Appreciate the clever work too, so from all sides. Thank you as well.
Yeah, I totally agree on that. And if I could add one thing, there, I think um, there is verbaling out in the community about this, so to the extent it's appropriate to say anything in public about this, you know, this contractor process, I think that would be helpful to get that out there through your, your channels.
I'll check in with Chris Floyd and make sure we're speaking appropriately, but I'd be happy to share it to the public.
Yeah, yeah.
Great.
Like Bill Bitchinown is alive and well.
And I, I do, uh, so Sarah, your comment, I think earned me my bonus points back.
I, you're, you earned it. Oh, no, thank you. And thanks to Patricia for uh, uh, her assistance and uh, her reasonable offer. Very, very considerate. I'll.
I do appreciate that.
Yeah. Let's see, sorry, let me just find where we are. Okay, I'll approve, uh, move to approve the PSA with Patricia Wooden for consulting services with the Lake County Sheriff's Office pending final legal review.
I'll second.
Maybe, there's no, oh, it's a question?
Nothing further for me.
Great, none for me, so call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so the PSA with Patricia Wooden is approved pending final uh legal review and signature. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Do you guys have anything else for me?
No, I think that's it. Thanks, you.
Please.
Agenda item number seven, discussion and consideration of a PSA with Cohero Case Management System for the coroner's office, led by Tim.
Sure, I can give a quick overview on the coroner's, if I miss anything. So this would be, uh, the coroner put this in his twenty-four budget for a case management system for his cases. Um, so uh, it is a little over nineteen hundred dollars for the first year implementation for the standard edition case management system and a little over twenty-five hundred dollars for the professional edition case management system. And then uh, ongoing, it's like between thirty-three and forty-three dollars a month for the five users in his office uh to manage their cases and things like that. He also has the Montezuma County Coroner's Office um, implementation process. It took about twenty days, so we just finished to take that about here. It's been reviewed by Tom uh in IT and been reviewed by legal. I don't think we have any issues.
And you said it was in the budget for best allocation, so, yeah.
So that's a big thing for us, thank you very much. Previously, we have been using our emails as our case management system. When someone leaves and the rest of us can't get that report, we have to go find it, which takes a lot of time.
Yeah.
So that'll be super helpful. It also helps us, uh, so sharing the data that we share with our pathologists is not something we should share unencrypted or via any method that is not widely approved by the industry. Uh, so that really helps us, so I appreciate that. Uh, we also have requested access to contextual. I don't know if that is before we're ordered in this meeting.
Is that the, the other co-chiro or?
Cohi- uh, Cohero, they're somewhat unfortunate in the end.
One. Yeah, and I think with, with that one, that one's on hold right now because the, the county manager and I reviewed that and we also reached out to the appointed medical um director to determine, you know, how that might be used. And at this point in time, the recommendation from them is that it's really perhaps not the best resource for your office based on how it's traditionally used with living people. And the risk, i- i- essentially what it does is give access to medical records to assist them in determining the cause of death. And the medical director's recommendation is that the autopsy is actually what's best for that.
So the problem is?
And the concern is that reliance on medical records of a decedent might end up presenting a situation where the cause of death could be challenged. And so our recommendation at this point, I would not be to proceed with that. Perhaps there's a different resource that can be used to have the same, you know.
And it, and it's for that access?
For, it allows them to access medical records of a decedent, their past medical history, if you will, which the concern would be the potential for it to be relied on in a way that could undermine the actual autopsy, you know, results and such. So that is, that is the feedback we're getting from the medical director.
So I just want to ask a clarifying question, so, so make sure, so there's the case management system and then that, are they both run by the same company?
No, it's, it's a different spelling, yes. So the only one I'm interested for today is this case management, uh, one which, which I would recommend approval of, seeing as just that. The other one that was requested was a subscription to provide them with access to um past medical records.
Yeah, I just wanted to get the names right. So is Cohero the right name for the one that we're approving today?
It's, it's C.O.H.I.R.O. is the one he's asking about that we would like to also have considered. This one, the C.O.H.E.R.O. is the case management.
Okay, great. I just want to make sure we had it right, so we approved the right thing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry. You, you, you'd wanted to?
So basically, we are not interpreting these records on our own, so we, so we give them to our doctors for autopsies. And while we have access to them, they can't pull those. It's not their case, it's not their jurisdiction. So that's, what we're trying to do is help them get the best info that they possibly can. That, so we pull medical records one way or another. It just takes a lot longer if we don't have access to contextual slash Cohero. Cohero.
So I, and.
You have the other software.
I, I missed for a second, then who, who, it, in the current situation without the Cohero with an I, who, who actually pulls those? Like, what's the?
So the deputies do. We have to figure out who someone's doctors were and then we have to call them and get them backstabbed. It takes quite some time. And uh, while HIPAA does not apply to decedents or borders in Colorado, um, it can be sometimes very difficult to convince a doctor of that now.
Yeah.
Uh, my only question with the current um, scope of work is that it. is that it talks about what the proposal did not include, which is an interface to a third-party system, such as the state of Colorado Electronic Death Reporting System or Toxicology and Drug Identification Services. But it can accommodate that. Is that something you've chosen to leave out? Or would that be an add-on that you would explore after you've implemented?
So we don't really need either of those things. We get access to EDR for free.
Okay.
And our toxicology services are included in all of our autopsy reports.
Okay.
So I, I think that our case management system would be able to handle that, just fine.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, I mean, my, on the medical workers, my sense is since it wasn't actually listed in the agenda item and there's some outstanding questions and want to continue the discussion and yeah, hear through, yeah, what the issue is. But I don't think we can approve that today, so. With, yeah, any other questions to look for a motion?
No, I don't have any other questions. I just, maybe if you haven't talked to Dr. Lisa already, that would be a good place to start.
A hundred.
Help us, yeah, I understand, not better. Other than that, I'll move to approve the PSA with Cohero, C O H E R O, Case Management System for the coroner's office.
One second.
Any additional comments or questions?
No, nothing, nothing for me, no.
I would say I appreciate you working through, like, I mean, yeah, getting records organized. Yeah, something, as you said, could easily be not done great. So I really appreciate you just getting thing, you know, all the backup house stuff set up to work better and better, thanks. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So PSA with Cohero Case Management System is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number eight, discussion and consideration of a PSA with CBS Accounting LLC for the review of finance and accounting operations of Lake County Government.
Sure, so this is PSA for the finance office. This is with CBS, otherwise known as Christine Stoudt, student. So her last name, she has worked with Lake County Government since nineteen eighty-five, providing external help. So we are going to continue working with her this year. She's helping with the I Bailey work and continues to help Treasurer Smith as well. So we're asking to re-up her for twenty twenty-four.
Is that a, sorry, I'll pull it up, but is there a scope of cap on that? Or is that just as needed, except I apologize?
Yes, there's an on-exceed on this.
Okay, good.
Okay.
Great, thank you for that question.
Said that the expectation is to complete the services on or before March fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Is that accurate?
No, it's a typo.
I highlighted that, took it out, so.
Christine's fast, man.
All right, so.
Should be end of the year, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
I will fix that.
Okay. Thanks, guys.
I don't have any questions, so look for a motion to approve the PSA with CBS Accounting LLC?
So, whoop. Second.
Thank you.
Sorry.
And I got on note that's with that date change as we talked about, so end of this calendar year.
Twenty twenty-four.
Twenty twenty-four. Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So PSA with CBS Accounting is approved. All right. Thank you. So we move on to agenda item number nine, discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty twenty-four dash oh-nine, Resolution Adopting Standards for Processing Beer and Liquor License Applications. I can lead off with some comments here. So this draft resolution twenty twenty-four oh-nine, in my opinions, just an administrative clarification of how liquor licenses are reviewed and approved in Lake County. So liquor licenses have been reviewed throughout my term and I think for years before in a certain manner in the clerk's office. And this seems to have served the community and applicants perfectly well and efficiently. The intent, or my understanding of the intent with this resolution is simply to get down on paper what has been past practice with liquor licenses and not, you know, no way trying to add to or take away from the workload of the clerk's office and staff. In discussions around this, you know, in addition to being longstanding practice in Lake County, I think this arrangement of clerk's offices handling liquor licenses as well as some other applications like that, it's common in most counties and it's actually listed as one of the roles of county clerks by the Colorado County Clerks Association. It's my hope in this agenda item, and I think that my fellow commissioners, that in considering this resolution, we simply hope to continue past successful practice and just get that down on paper. If the clerk in the clerk's office chooses not to fulfill this role as outlined in the draft resolution twenty twenty-four oh-nine, then at a future meeting and in the near future, the BOCC will consider two items. The first is how to arrange alternative ways to serve the community with the service of handling liquor licenses. Sorry, serve the community and applicants. And that alternative way would, I guess, be in a different department. And second, an appropriate and fair reallocation of budget and staffing from the clerk's office to this other department to fairly reflect the time and costs of one, establishing this new function in a new department or a different department. And two, to reflect the ongoing staffing and operational costs of actually implementing that process. I sincerely hope that those two steps I just outlined can be avoided as they will be inefficient in their use of taxpayer money and I think unnecessary and will certainly be disruptive to whatever other departments are ending up having to process liquor permits. So with that, I'll see if any of my fellow commissioners have any additional comments or thoughts and then we can just introduce the motion or have a motion to get the draft resolution on the table for discussion. Any comments before?
I don't think I have a lot, no, I think your summary is accurate. And, you know, through my experience in working with the clerk's office to provide that service, and yeah, I don't, I don't understand where an objection to that has stemmed from.
No, I, I feel like this is just codifying what we've done so that there's not internal confusion of how this process is handled or that we have some interpretation on it.
Yeah, so I'd seek to motion to get the resolution twenty twenty-four oh-nine on the table and then certainly ask the clerk to weigh in with any points or discussion that we want to have.
I will make a motion that we approve resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine.
Can you read the title?
A Resolution Adopting Standards for Processing Beer and Liquor License Applications.
Second.
Great, so the motion's on the table. Tracy, you have the floor, if you want to have any discussion or points.
I have a few questions, thank you. The larger issue here is one elected official trying to tell another elected official what to do. This liquor licensing is not a statutory duty of the clerk and it was previously and is often used in other counties. However, that was prior to having a county manager, a deputy county manager and operations coordinator. And we now have three county attorneys. If you add up their salaries compared to ours, you're talking about almost four to five times more money that they are making, which also implies that their responsibilities are higher than ours. However, statute that a county attorney is using to try to, imply that we can, she can do this, it's specious. It is, you either, it's just a definition of what a local licensing board is. So you don't get to parse that up and go, oh, well, we kind of have a liquor licensing board here, but you're gonna do all the work over here. Either you make us the board or you don't. That's what this says, okay? So two issues here. Her argument is incorrect. And you don't have the right to tell another elected official what to do. So yes, we will decline this. I don't appreciate you threatening our budget. We need everybody we have and the fact we could use more. So I think that is very offensive on your behalf. And no, we will not take this on and I will take it to District Court if you put this on. Because that's a bigger argument than just liquor licensing.
Yeah, I, I guess if I could ask one question or maybe, it might be we're not telling you what's to do.
Oh, yeah, you are by resolution, you are. And you are not allowed to do that. And then you're threatening to cut our budget if we don't do it.
We are allowed to do all.
That's blackmail.
We are allowed to do all of those things.
You are not allowed to tell another elected official what to do. And that is not an institution.
Part that, that accusation, you know, I don't recall having a conversation with you about you not wanting to do this and you've inherited this role as the clerk. And so you just saying you won't do it is now saying that we have to do it.
Because you have staff now. You have tremendous staff helping you. We've actually gone down, I'm talking.
Now, I was talking, I was still talking, actually.
We, you have tremendous staff helping you now, we do not. We are actually down on staff member. You even argue money and staffing ability.
You are acting as if this is the only thing that that group of folks has to do. This is, this would not be the only thing.
I'm sorry, three attorneys, I can't handle it now. Three county attorneys, really? You really need, why are you just fighting with everybody that you need three county attorneys?
I'm happy to sit with you and explain all the things that we've been bringing out.
I'm happy to go to court, I'm not gonna argue those anymore. I've told you my reasoning.
So are you saying in the liquor license board that the board should be anyone else but the Board of Commissioners? Is that typically?
Board of County Commissioners in most of the nation can appoint another board to be the local liquor licensing authority. That's your only option. You don't get to say, oh, now we're gonna appoint you to be the administrative staff to the board. That's not what it says. Oh, I'm happy to go to court over.
And I would just offer that the clerk is welcome to engage legal counsel to give her a legal opinion as to the statutes we rely on.
Damn process.
So that's, she's welcome to do that. But it was thoroughly vetted, it's been researched by law zoo in terms of and how this has been applied in multiple other counties and such. And just relying on that one statute, the other one that applies is thirty ten four oh-two, where the Lake County Clerk serves as the clerk for the board when processing documents is designated by the board. And so that's your prerogative to ask the clerk for administrative processing of these applications.
Okay, I, I.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I had one clarifying question, so, and so I was just trying to pull up the resolution because there was a list of other, I think, permits or licenses. And I just wanted to ask politely, like, is it just the liquor licenses or are there other things on that list that you also were thinking about?
We are statutorily required to record documents. We get a fee for that for every document we record. And that is in statute and we continue to do that.
Yeah, no, sorry, let me, so I should have had this pulled up before I asked the question, sorry. Okay, yeah, so I think there's tasting permits, special event permit.
At all, because they're the licensing board of work.
Okay, I just, just wanted to make sure. So it's just the liquor license renewals or new application?
No, you are the liquor licensing authority for all of those types of permits.
So, so I just want to clarify, we're not asking for a change in the licensing authority. We're just, we just want to codify the process. But you're, you don't want, if you can help me understand, you don't want your office to participate in the process for the authority?
Correct. I think your staff have much more ability to do that than we do.
Well, as I laid out in my intro remarks, I think my view, and we'll see where the vote comes down, is that this resolution is appropriate as stands and we can take the next steps I outlined. So exploring what alternative ways to do this are and what the budget and staffing implications are at a meeting in the near future. I'm not sure there's much value in diving deeper into points, but open to further questions or comments?
Probably not, just disappointing.
Yeah, I don't know if it's worth it to look at, I mean, like going forward with the process of adopting the resolution as it sits to designate the clerk's office as the office to do the processing if we need to figure out how to fit that in on other people's job descriptions and duties and plates and recount that process. I don't, I don't know if it's worth it for us to continue to talk through the resolution.
If I'm gonna say, yeah, so maybe it's better not to have it voted on and adopted if it's then not actually the process.
I would recommend, I would recommend you adopt it and allow the clerk to use her prerogative to challenge it if she wishes to. I would recommend that because otherwise it's challenging, still it's held that you have the authority.
So it's not a hypothetical that's being brought?
Exactly, yes, it's actually was.
Do you have a, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
I mean, I see your point. I see, I see your point, but I see that point too.
I think we'll just need to figure out internally then what happens so that we don't have a lapse in any process.
Yeah, well, I think that's what I said in the next steps. I mean, we'll sit down, I think we can talk about whether that's a sort of internal ops meeting or whether that's a, and we have a special meeting on the calendar for tomorrow where we can talk about it. I think that was the purpose of the Wednesday meeting, right? Yeah, so.
I would just point out that we already do have a lapse from this. We're business owners in this community of people trying to start businesses.
Okay, so, yeah, so we will move rapidly, probably tomorrow on that posted meeting, to figure out next steps.
Okay.
And again, well, yeah, as I said, but I read through it kind of fast. So figure out alternative staffing ways to meet the needs of the community and applicants in a different department and discuss how, I mean, that was not part of the twenty twenty-four budget allocations to have that done in a different department. So we'll talk about how to budget, allocate budget and staff.
Okay.
Okay, I'll call for a vote on the motion on the table twenty twenty-four oh-nine. You're, sorry, you're.
Well, I just, I just can't even come up with a question or a way that I think that we Well, I just, I just can't even come up with a question or a way that I think that we could have an amicable conversation about this, which is just really disappointing. And I don't understand why that you haven't brought this to us to have a.
Nobody came and discussed it with me, you simply threw a resolution at me last yesterday afternoon.
Well, I, I mean, you threw this at the manager and we've been discussing it and those conversations have gone back and forth.
And, and he sat on it for two months. Nobody came to discuss it with me.
You know, I don't, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think that, I mean, it's clear that no other way but your way is going to work.
Again, nobody came and discussed it with me. So don't imply anything about my intention. I was handed this resolution yesterday afternoon, so don't put words in my mouth. And don't say that you attempted to come and discuss it with me because nobody ever came and discussed it with me.
Tracy, did you come into your, excuse me, I'm sorry. I did come into your office last week and say that these, this and the next agenda item were coming up.
Yeah, but I didn't see the resolution till like yesterday afternoon.
We forwarded the drafts on Friday and for that, but I, I wasn't involved in that. But I thought the drafts of these were disseminated.
I mean, I just think this, I mean, this is just a great example and I'm glad we're having this discussion publicly because I think, um, other colleagues sit behind.
You, you're always proud of publicly.
I know, I'm glad, I'm glad. Because I think our other colleagues sit behind the fact that they don't have to face, um, the public and answer the public. And there's ambiguity as to how, how the public, um, deals with our other electeds or, or communicates with them. And some conversation is important to have on the record, um, to show that, you know, this is, this is really disruptive stuff that seems pretty simple and is, feels very petty to have, you know, thrown back at the board. And, and then we are used to getting run over by the bus over and over again.
I feel like I'm the one getting run over by a bell tower. You're imposing those on me.
Well, and you're equally making assumptions about our staff.
And then you're threatening me with a budget cut if we don't do it. So who's getting run over by a bus, Sarah?
It is our prerogative to, to change.
And it's my prerogative also as an elected official to simply do my statutory duty. And you, as elected officials, do not have the right to impose something on me that I disagree with. And I'm happy to take that to court. I'm sorry you don't understand that. I am not a department under you or under the county manager. And it's time you learn that.
So question back to the, or sorry, Sarah, if I may.
Go for it.
Um, uh, where was I going? Um, so appreciate that Friday and some updated drafts this week is short notice. Do you think more time would actually be, I mean, just honestly, do you think more time to look at the resolution would change any where we are?
Are we getting on to the next?
No, 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 the, we're still on the liquor licenses. Just wondering whether more time for you to review this will get us in a different place.
I am happy to sit down and talk with one of you and the county manager. I did raise, um, having this thrown in my face yesterday. Oh, you wanna sit down and discuss this, we'll discuss this. But remember this, we get a fee for recordings. We get a fee for motor vehicle. We get a fee for driver's license and we get reimbursements for elections. We get nothing for liquor license, except to be your secretary.
I'm not sure what that matters because it goes to the general fund.
If it matters to us.
That's what, but that's per state law.
County operation.
That's not, we have no control over that. There is no ability for us to create a fee to pay the clerk's office for processing that.
My point is, we're down one staff member. Are you gonna allow us to hire one more person? And they can become an expert in liquor licensing?
Was this?
That would be the discussion then. We don't have to talk about that right now. But that is the discussion and those salient points. Because you're talking about, you have this huge, well-paid staff over here and you're wondering how they're gonna fit it in, but you don't allow us any benefit. You're now asking us how are we gonna fit in, how are we gonna budget it?
For the allocated staffing that's already in the clerk's office?
Yeah.
Because this is some, this isn't something that just came up and they started. This is something that's traditionally been done for decades by the clerk's office. So.
Prior to most counties, having a county manager.
No, it's still the same primary process. And I see, I see chair, but I, it's, I, I wanna make sure it's an accurate representation as to why this is coming up.
Yeah, and I think I agree with the clerk on this, that let's have this discussion about staffing levels and budget allocation in a smaller group.
If the clerk treats me with professional dignity and respect in that meeting.
That is an expectation of everyone in the county.
Sure. So that, if that's the, the process moving forward, then where?
I think we still vote.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I see the pros and cons, but I'm, I think getting it formally there, so it's not a hypothetical legal question. If, if anyone chooses to pursue the legal avenue. So, yeah, uh, call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, so twenty twenty four oh nine, a resolution adopting standards for processing beer and liquor license applications is approved. Thank you. And, yeah, I'll work with the clerk and the county manager and any other folks that seem helpful to have that thought discussion. And we'll also discuss, we have, just we have it posted for tomorrow for a public session and we'll discuss whether we, we, we hold that.
Thank you.
Good.
Good.
Okay. Agenda item ten, uh, discussion and consideration of the adoption of resolution twenty four ten. A resolution setting official hours for the Lake County courthouse administrative offices for the transaction of county business. Um, and I'll lead in with some, uh, opening background and comments here. The purpose, the primary purpose of this resolution twenty twenty four ten is to, uh, address standard office hours of the three, what I, I think of as the sort of primary public facing offices here. The assessor's office, treasurer, uh, and clerk and recorder. I do want to lead off, uh, recognizing fully that these three offices are led by independent elected officials in the county. Uh, and we respect that. However, it is the B O C C authority to set hours. And as we've been thinking about this, at least for me, I think of three criteria in how to set, I mean, office hours in general. I mean, this is how we think about it for departments that are not led by elected officials, but I think it, they're fair criteria. First is providing the best service to the community. Second is reasonable hours given the staffing and budget allocation in any given department. And the third is fair treatment of all departments. And to elaborate on that, I just think all departments should be treated fairly. And there shouldn't be sort of special exceptions, you know, um, in how those first two criteria are kind of implemented. I am not convinced that the recent past and recently changed hours for the clerk's office meet these three criteria. And I hope that in bringing forward this draft resolution, we can prompt some clearer and collaborative discussion of how to best serve the community and meet those criteria. And again, I see this as a starting point for discussion. And, excuse me, while, did someone have the top of their head what the hour, like, so it's Monday to Friday?
Eight to five.
Eight to five was what the resolution is, and sorry, I just have the other resolution pulled up.
And that's what has been posted on the front door of the courthouse as the county's operating house.
So as, uh, before, welcome any further comments or questions or, um, points from fellow commissioners?
I don't think I have any time to start up yet now. I think you kind of hit what we were, what we wanted to talk about.
Yeah, I, I, other than, I mean, I, I know different departments have different ways of approaching hours. Uh, some are open through the weekend and closed during the week or have four-day work weeks, but their staff works and covers the office open five days a week. Um, I appreciate, um, Mark and Patrick, the treasurer and the assessor being here to share with us any concerns or, uh, questions they might have too or offer support in, um, continuing to approach this. In what I have observed, is there, uh, approach to keeping office hours?
Yeah, thanks. And if, yeah, fellow commissioners have done it, I did wanna turn it over to, um, elected since, I mean, this resolution addresses directly your, your three offices, um, so might start with, uh, the treasurer, if that's okay? I don't know if you have any.
I support the, um, resolution. I believe as an elected official, we're here to serve the public. We should be open during lunch hours to serve the public who come here on their lunch hours to do their business. We are always open. I think we're closed twice, once for a selfish birthday for me, they took me out. And, um, sometimes we're closed when we are short-staffed, but we are generally open all the time from eight to five to serve the public.
Great, thanks, thank you.
While we're here and other offices are closed, we get the brunt of their dissatisfaction with coming here to do their business while certain offices are closed. As well as U V S and other delivery services. We have to take those packages, which isn't a problem. But some of those documents are probably very important. And, uh, we're here, we take it and then we give it to the office that was closed during those times.
And, oh, sorry. And could you remind me how many full-time staff you have in your office?
There's me, the deputy, you're having one other staff.
Chris, thank you. Assessor, I'll turn the floor over to you if you have any comments you'd like to make.
Um, pretty much just what Patrick says, um, especially the Friday. I know Friday afternoons are my busiest time. A lot of, you know, seventy-three percent of our population drives over the hill for work. It's pretty nice for them to be able to schedule their business in the courthouse because they generally go to Patrick's office, secret tax bill. Don't like their ballot, you come over and talk to me. That's kind of the Friday afternoon thing that we get. And I know that when I worked over in Breckenridge for fifteen years, I worked four-ten's over there. And it was so nice to come into the courthouse on a Friday to do my business. If somebody's closed, it's, it's a very big burden on them to take another day off and not have to go to work over there or reschedule around Friday. Sure, my employees would love to go to a four-ten thing, but I don't think, I don't think it does the county any good. Doesn't do the county any good to do that. So I'm in support of, of adding set hours and, you know, we generally open eight, eight-thirty. Well, that's gonna stop. I mean, if you guys stop this, we'll be open right at eight o'clock right along with Patrick, you know, right before. I think consistency is a good thing too. The county, the county building needs to know that we're open for all, but at the same time, well, it's pretty easy.
Yeah. I appreciate that point and, and.
In addition to Friday being a payday for most of the time.
Yeah. And, and again, to reiterate what I said in the beginning, my individual opinion is, like, we're looking for reasonable hours. I don't know if eight to five is the exact right number for every department. And my purpose in this is, is it to prompt some clearer and collaborative discussion about to best serve the community. Can I ask one follow-up question? Mark, what, how many full-time staff do you have in you?
Fully staffed, I'll have five, oh, six, I'm sorry. But currently I have five.
Okay, thank you. And clerk, the floor is yours.
I have a statement, I saw it right up, I read it.
Absolutely.
Our office seems to have instigated this resolution to impose office hours on all county departments. I know you absolutely have the right to set office hours, but there was no previous resolution prior to this one. Our decision behind this change in our hours was unanimous decision by my staff. Some of the reasons they wanna change our hours is it simply makes their life a little easier. Half the staff have school-aged children and need to provide childcare on Fridays due to the schools being closed. Others have spouses who work a flexible schedule and have Fridays free. It's been shown in studies that a four-day work week promotes better work-life balance that allows for a happier and healthier lifestyle. A four-day work week also allows for staff to schedule appointments, hum their day off, and therefore reduce absences. There are fifteen counties in Colorado and apparently Breckenridge that currently operate on a four-day work week. Archuleta, Chavy, Clear Creek, Castillo, Custer, Dolores, Elbert, Fremont, Gilpin, Jackson, Manazuma, Amontrose, Yurea Park, and San Miguel. An informal poll by our office last Friday, where we only had eleven people come in on a Friday, showed that ninety-nine percent would prefer longer hours where they could come in earlier before they go to work or come in after their overwork and not have to take time off during the week to come into our office. I recently had a job opening in our office. I received two applications in three weeks. And both of those decided to withdraw before I could even schedule an interview. We all know that Lake County is becoming more and more difficult to hire. If we had a four-day work week, I believe we could attract more applicants. There is a balance that must be established between keeping our staff happy and therefore reducing attrition and attracting better candidates and helping the public. We believe that allowing our office to move to a four-ten work week, we can achieve those priorities.
I'll say thank you, I appreciate that clear and, I mean, thoughtful statement. I really do appreciate that. Um, that's, that's helpful to understand the, yeah, where your, you and your staff are coming from.
And, um, staffing-wise, I have four departments. I have one person in driver's license, one person in recording, one person in elections, and two people in DMV.
And, um, wait.
So it would not be possible to stay up during lunch unless you wanna take away the lunches.
Because, sorry, just to understand better how the functions of your office, um, because, because not everyone can sort of stay at the DMV front, front desk.
Well, yeah, I mean, I turn, as I do elections.
Yeah.
Can I?
And, um, you know, we have some ability when, for example, my deputy is able to do recordings. If our recorder is not there, but, uh, she's not fully trained. And, yeah, it's just kind of a stopgap measure.
Yeah. Yeah, Sandra, I'm very willing to, yes, please.
So because I work with the DMV, I deal with a lot of complaints that we get from customers. They have to take off time to make it between the eight to five. Our entire office has talked about how to make shorter lunches, do rolling lunches. Unfortunately for the DMV side, it takes six months to a year to be trained at the state proficiency, where you are able to sit there and take transactions, process titles, manufactured home titles, and all of the things that we do. A lot of stuff can be done online now. Um, there's even ways for people to email or text us their insurance. We can do it over the phone if you can't process it online. We have all really thought about this. We get the backlash every single time that somebody had to come in at eight-thirty. Unfortunately, we have tried to get other staff members to be able to do simple renewals, but the state is very hard set that they have to do all of. but the state is very hard set that they have to do all of the training in order to have drives access. To be able to access the DMV, they have to be enrolled as a DMV employee and they have to do that training. I've been here for six months. I still have three classes because you have to step out and you have to take flip classes. That's ninety minutes where I can't step up and help a customer. It is actually a really grueling process to be able to get all of the staff to be able to help frontline with DMV.
Yeah, thanks. I really appreciate that additional information. That's all.
Um, no, go ahead.
No, no, no.
Um, I was, I was just gonna ask, uh, what, what, um, if you can help us understand what your staffing looks like then, like, currently, how many staff members do you have doing DMV and then other, what other staff members are?
Oh, we have two people in DMV, obviously Cindy, who's very experienced.
Okay.
Hunter is almost there, and we are hiring a new person starting April second. So it's gonna take him-
Okay.
Six months to, to be fully trained, or he could be left alone. Um, and the rest are all single in the different departments.
And is most of the walk-up, like, um, community members coming in, is, is that mostly DMV stuff? Or like, I mean, like nine, like nine?
Um, driver's license are the, I don't know, right now.
Yeah, alright.
I would say most of our walk-up is DMV. Um, and like, the whole staff, we have discussed it of like, right now with getting a new person, to be able to keep it open during lunch, one of us would have to go earlier, the other one would have to go later, and then that individual person who's still training, they could go, um, potentially when recording driver's license and elections went. Um, I think that the only service that'd be open during lunch would be DMV, and it seems to be that's like the main thing that people want to be able to do during the lunch hour.
Yeah.
Um, it does, it's just the training is so extensive. It couldn't be like, oh, I leave and then that person leaves in the middle of my hour. Like, all of our hours would have to be very staggered so that me and Cindy are there covering the hour of that other person. So it would definitely be, somebody's going at eleven and then somebody's probably going at one. Um, so then that lunch hour is covered by somebody who can perform the duties of the DMV.
Yeah.
The other concern I have is, um, something that I think Mark alluded to. Um, if we're, or maybe it was Patrick, if we're short staff and we have to shut the door. So now somebody thinks we're open at lunch and they show up and they're angry because we weren't able to help them. I would prefer that people know exactly what our set hours are, and so being open at lunch is just gonna piss people off if we have to close because somebody is sick or on vacation.
On, on any given day, yeah.
Um, it's helpful to hear that there's that discussion about staggering those hours because I do think that that's important and I don't know, um, but based on, I mean, the hours that you currently posted, you know, I, I mean, based on what you said today, it seems that you might, are you, would you offer hours further into the afternoon after a regular workday?
Yeah, we would start at thirty till five-thirty.
Is that, but is that actually enough time to get people home to do that? I mean, to me, it might make more sense from like eight to six or eight-thirty to six.
Well, I'm open to-
Or-
I think our whole staff is extremely open to doing it, um, because that is like a huge complaint. You know, um, before I got this job with the county, I did work in both Avon and Summit, and it was the hardest thing to ever conduct any kind of business. Um, right now, I think for us too, especially as staff members, it's hard for us to plan going to the dentist, going to the doctor, um, taking care of our needs without leaving our department where you've got a line of ten-plus people and you've got one person that can help those people. Um, yes, the state is starting to go on to, a lot of more things are going to be available online for people to process. And a lot of it is you can process even duplicate titles. If you put in all your information, I come in during the day and I check your information and then I print your title. Um, so there are a lot of options, and I think our staff is extremely open to like an eight to six, an eight-thirty to six-thirty. Like, we are all extremely open to make longer hours happen for people. Um, because they, like, they do say the same things, lunch hours, later hours. It's, I think it's easier to take thirty minutes to drive over the hill, like, I'm gonna leave at four-thirty or I'm gonna leave at five to make it here in time versus them trying to not get to work until after we open at eight-thirty. Um, so I think that we're all very open to the flexibility of the hours.
Yeah, it seems to weigh it on one side or the other rather than splitting the difference actually will help people with that driving time.
Yeah.
Um, um, and then how about like the, I mean, because I still think that being open five days a week would be, I mean, I think that's what we all are aiming to do and like we're talking about doing, but is that not possible then? I mean, what?
Well, we would just continue the schedule we have now of five days a week. I don't, I'm, I'm quite sure what you're asking.
Well, you can have people working four-ten's, but the office is open five days a week, which is-
Alternating four-ten's.
Right, alternating four-ten's, um, which is-
Again, we don't have enough people to do that. We have one recorder, one elections, one driver's license, and right now we only have two DMV, and one cannot be left alone currently. And the new person wouldn't be able to be left alone for probably six months.
I think the hardest part is if we staggered it, is when we get a line and there's only one DMV clerk, that's when people tend to get angry because you're just standing there because you have a renewal. But the person I'm helping in front of you just brought a car in from another state route to verify this paperwork. Yeah. Um, so that's hard. And then I think also with like us having the other departments, like, you're gonna have a day where you can't have recording done. You're gonna have a day where you can't go to driver's license or ask election questions. Um, and I think like our staff, because we've talked about everything all together, is that it would be easier just to have the office closed one set day where no service is available, um, versus it being staggered. Because if you come and it's a Friday and you only have one DMV tech, you might be more upset that you're standing in line for twenty minutes on a Friday than you would be if, oh, I figured out that I can do it online and I think we could even make a bunch of postings, like what you're able to do online now. Because I don't know that a lot of people know that you can do a lot of your DMV needs online now, including driver's license.
Yeah, I would say I haven't gone to the DMV in a while.
Yeah.
I renewed my license online. I renewed my license plates online.
I am a fan to fight back.
Uh, I'm sorry. I, I use the app on my phone for literally every day. Um, but I, but there, there are a ton of resources out there that if people know about them, they can, we can utilize them. Um, but I do think, I do think having consistency among departments is pretty critical because I think, um, you know, to Patrick's point, um, it, it does get confusing if somebody's open and somebody else is not open and, and those kinds of things where people come in expecting to get, you know, their taxes figured out and they go to market to get a mobile home figured out and then they have to get their mobile home accorded or the deed released or whatever that looks like to get that done. Um, like, I think there is some value in maintaining consistency across the board.
I agree. I think that would-
Go ahead, go ahead.
I was just, Mark and Gidra, if you could just walk through, right? Like, so the woman who came yesterday to get her deceased husband of, of her deed, right? Like, it means all three offices open that day.
Correct. Or any mobile tenant, like, mobile home change, title change. They start in the Assessor's office. They come to us to make sure they pay their taxes, and then the final step is the third and quarters to get their title. So that's always the three step process, the deed change, plus like maybe the two offices, um, yeah, so that like, some stuff requires all three offices and to have all three offices open. Or when something happens and somebody comes in, does a mobile home change and it's right at four fifteen, almost four-thirty, we have to make sure that they rush and do their paperwork in the Assessor's office, come to us right away and say, okay, we gotta rush you down to the clerk's office. Because they shut their doors at four-thirty, you may or may not be able to get to finish that last step because they come in at that time or whatever. It's frustrating. Or when they come in before lunchtime, you go, sorry, they closed their doors at twelve. You're gonna have to wait and come back at one and finish the last step. So then we stagger our lunches. We have a three-staff, sometimes two-staff, sometimes just one. If it's just me and Patrick and Erica right in, we stay open. Like, even with a one-staff office during our lunch break to make sure that we're open during lunchtime.
One thing you could consider is making all offices four-ten similar to the fifteen counties I mentioned.
Well, I know, talking to Fremont County, that was in response to furloughing and they have a thirty-two-hour week. It's not four-ten's. It's four days a week for budgeting purposes. So I don't know about the other fourteen counties, but I don't, yeah, I mean, that's just, I know it's not just a four-day work week, um, preference. That's what's considered for that decision.
Uh, and speaking with the Chaffee County manager, the prior one and then the current one, when they switched to four-ten, so it was not done as a cost savings measure. It's actually ended up costing them a bit more, plus the public pushback on that, but that is something that we discussed last year when Chaffee County moved to them, um, at CLT. But they thought at CLT, you know, even for some of the departments that, that have a four-ten schedule, that it was imperative being open that fifth day. So that's why, you know, Public Health, DHS, and the library, they're open. At least those days, you know, that they're scheduled. Um, so it wasn't, uh, like, I'm happy to follow up with all of those managers.
Yeah, well, I think, I mean, we have other, I mean, we discussed before, like, we have the library, the landfill, like, there's lots of departments or, you know, Rec is sort of on its own, like, crazy schedule with, you know, daytime and evening and weekend programming. So it's not that every, yeah, like, different departments are gonna serve the community best with different schedules. So when I said, like, fair treatment, that does not mean exactly equivalent or exactly, you know, to the minute, the same.
Right. Yeah, I'm just not, is there, um, it seems like maybe there could be, could there, could there be more discussion on, like, it seems like certain staff could alternate a four-ten, but others maybe could not in the spirit of keeping, like, all the services available.
We, we might be able to work something like that, huh?
Or like some, some folks who work from a nine, like, if, if the office hours are eight or nine to six or something, some folks would start their day later and work the five days maybe, and some others might have a four.
I need a grid.
Yeah, yeah. Um, well, it seems like the DMV folks need, maybe need a little bit more of a different schedule or could have a different schedule because there's more of them, and that's the primary service that people want to see, it seems. And then the other ancillary services with recording and how that relates to the other offices, maybe there could be a different shift that is applied to that position?
It's, it is in your resolution that you can approve alternate hours, so we can certainly talk about them.
I wonder if going forward, as much as I love talking staff interview, um, I wonder if, uh, just an, an idea, I wonder if like a, a rep, representative, like a staff person from each of the three departments could like meet maybe with an H R-
Sure.
-facilitator, make sure we don't break employment law as we mess with schedules and just sort of, yeah, keep talking through this. I mean, because I, I, do, do you think you all know best what goes on in your offices and like where the services need to go?
For example, Dridra mentioned somebody coming in at four-thirty, we're, we're closed, but if we had extended hours, they would have been able to finalize their, whatever things they were trying to do.
And I think we're all pretty flexible about it. I think like our main thing is, is like, right now there's like two of us. And like, it's, it's like extremely hard for Cindy and I, because like if recording's down for a day, then you know, like, oh, it'll get recorded when she gets here or somebody else can piggyback that. But if one of us is gone, it is like a really big strain when we have like a line of people and then we don't have a backup person to like pull up. Um, and so like for us, like, we want to be able to like manage our business and take care of ourselves, but that's hard when it's just the two of us to do that for.
Yeah.
Sorry, take three minutes. It's not, I'm curious, does, is there, like, when you said somebody's on the DMV Instagram or online to renew something and they could do it online? Can they use one of the computers in the back to do that or is that just a searching?
Um, no, so those are just for searching, but you can access it like on your phone, on your own. Um, and then basically anything that's done online, we, unless it's, unless you're getting personalized license plates, usually like you process it and the next morning immediately when I get in there, like, I, I run like the registrations that were done. I look at the duplicate title requests. Um, so we really, like, we track everything and it's like done and sent out. Um, and then even if like we were to do it on like Friday and it was just like online services and you processed everything online, like, I think that we can make that work too. It's just, that's the hardest part is like we can't take care of ourselves and also take care of our department when there's limited people who can actually do our services when you come in in person.
I wonder if we can add a kiosk or an additional computer for, so that you can-
Um, a kiosk in other counties are like at the same, what is it, King Supers? So they're available whenever the grocery store's open. That's actually a better than bringing it here.
Or we could have a sign that says like, go online to the library and, you know, and use a computer at the library or something. I don't know.
Um, we, Lake County residents are allowed to use the kiosks. We do have an agreement with the company that runs them. So they are, I mean, if they're in Summit County, they can go to the King Supers or the Simarka, I don't know. There's a kiosk there and they can go use that to do any DMV instruments. If they're unlike Caitlin, you see them.
Can you say on my Colorado web is-
Well, I think, I mean, I think it's worth the continued discussion, uh, passing this resolution with the intent of, you know, meeting community needs, looking at that five-day-a-week, how we can be open five days a week through lunchtimes and also different times, you know, in, Rec does evening, landfill does weekends. How can we extend your hours into the evening further to, you know, and, and accommodate however that scheduling shift, uh, might, might actually work out? But, um, if y'all would be open, well, if I may, to like the continued conversation of figuring that out? Um, I think that would be great.
Yeah, or, or assisting with, um, any kind of professional development or crash training or whatever that looks like to- I know that the process is really long, um, to do the DMV stuff, but, um, I just wonder if there's value in having some consistency in what happens either, especially in terms of like coop training and, and coop planning, that continuity piece. So, um, which could alleviate some of that in the moment. Because I, I think when you look at longevity of process, um, with, with, um, customer-facing positions in particular, um, although we always want employees to stay, there's always that, um, you know, you can't prevent them from leaving. And so I think the more, um, investment in you, that you place into those employees and providing them a crash training and this, like, giving them opportunity to grow their skillset, whether they do a DMV processes on a daily basis or not, um, that could, that is one, an investment into them to get them additional technological professional development, but also two, creates your decency and continuity in the, in your office. So I think there's some value in talking about that going forward as well.
Yeah, so I think a, a question for me, from me, is whether, I mean, what I hear is we're gonna keep having a good discussion about some of these issues. I think a question for me is whether we actually want to withdraw the resolution because it does have some specifics in there. Let me finish the question. I mean, I'm, 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 I'm happy to pass it with the understanding that we are in an implementation mode and we're being flexible with that, but just get it there.
If you withdraw the resolution, we will postpone any changes until we have that discussion.
Uh, welcome thoughts from first commissioners, then I'll turn to Tim and Chris.
I'd, I'd just say that I would, I would much welcome, um, equal-
I'd, I'd just say that I would, I would much welcome, um, a collaborative conversation and approach um, to create some uniformity amongst departments, um, rather than, um, like just fitting a square peg into a circle. I think if there's, if there's room for everyone to come to the table and have a conversation about what works best for everyone, like there may be options in Tracy's office that work really well for Patrick or Mark's office. I, I just don't know that we know that quite yet if we haven't opened the door to have that conversation. And if that is not an option, then that is not an option and we can bring this back to the table and.
So you, uh, so you lead towards withdrawing?
Yeah, I think, I think so, I, because if there's willingness for everybody to come to the table and have that conversation, then I, I want to keep the door open to have that conversation.
Well, I'm so, I'm curious, I mean, I don't know, and maybe Chris, you can respond, like, I'm not sure what in the resolution would not continue to communicate the intent that we have all talked about. So I don't know if we need to rescind the resolution. I don't know if it's that specific because I think that's the intent to have every office really.
Look at it.
I mean, is there something that?
Yeah, that's why that one statement's in there about that, you know, about there is the potential for deviation from the schedule.
Right.
If they come back and say, okay, here's what we'll do to try to accommodate, you know, serving the public. You'd have that option to be able to do that. This is essentially, I mean, the, the code essentially has y'all establishing operating hours for the county, which apparently has not been done in the past. And so this is just, uh, essentially clarify what you have posted on the front door of eight to five or whatever hours you decide are the regular ones, if you don't want what's in the, yeah.
Yeah.
Resolution.
Excuse me, I have to go, we have the resolution, the day not in county right now.
No, thank you. I, I kinda, I don't know, I don't feel strongly, either way, I think, well, wanted to hear Tracy say it, but I think with, yeah, we've had, I think, really clear intent stated here from everyone that we're gonna have a good collaborative internal, yeah, process and discussion. So I, I feel okay passing the resolution, it does have that provision, as Chris said, about being able to discuss whatever the wording is, other, other hours.
Okay.
I don't think it makes a big difference, I mean, so.
Sure. I, I wonder, sorry, I'm sorry, just because it is, I wonder if there's, um, I know we don't necessarily wanna wordsmith in the meeting, but if, if like we could change that.
Sounds like you do.
I know, I don't know if it, if it helps, like just with that, just not taking the, the intent so literally, but now therefore be resolved, like, you know, I mean, is there something else we can put in there? Chris, having drafted this, maybe this will come quicker to you, um, where it's like the intent of the board to, um, have a five day work week, unless it's somewhere else that I'm just forgetting, you know?
Yeah, like, I mean, and that paragraph could be like, you know, I don't know if default's the right word, but, you know, default.
Well, yeah, every.
Hours, you know, in less.
Maybe we table to the next meeting too and wordsmith that a little bit more. Or, um, and also because I wanna refer to the other offices that really need to be working, I think, in conjunction with each other. Um, and to make sure that that's, um, that's more clear in there, um.
Like, yeah, where, where and how that flexibility gets.
Right.
Worked out, I like that. Uh, and also, I mean, again, sorry if Tracy's not here, but just given that she expressed an interest in holding off on the resolution, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm open to that, I think we know what, we know what we're doing here now.
Yeah.
And what, and what discussion needs to be had.
Yeah, I think we can say like something like an eight hour office day, five days a week, rather than like eight to five.
Yeah.
And that coordination overlaps at least significantly with the office hours of, um, um, related offices or appropriately related offices, something like that. So maybe we can wordsmith that for the next meeting.
And I think there's also a point that I don't think is in here about, I mean, it does have to match up with what the actual budget and staffing allocations are. Right, like, again, not, you know, down the road, if some budget got, got for whatever reason, you know, we don't wanna have someone being held and held for certain hours when they just literally don't have the staff work. So, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll move to table, uh, resolution twenty-four dash ten to our next regular meeting on April second, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that we can further wordsmith the content to meet our conversation, our discussion today.
Okay, I'll second.
Call for a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, so the resolution.
Twenty-four ten.
Thank you, is tabled. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deidre.
Alrighty.
County manager department report, sorry.
No.
Two more.
Um, sure, um, so we'll start doing monthly reports from the county manager's office, updating the commissioners on permanent issues. Um, some couple of high level things to start with, we have two hundred and sixty-six active employees. Um, and since the beginning of this year, we have hired or promoted, uh, or onboarded fifty OTEs. Um, currently have nineteen job postings and are working on restructuring our, um, internship program. We are working on our twenty twenty-three budgeted versus actuals. Uh, Jester and team have closed the books for twenty twenty-three, we're starting to analyze that data. Most departments were under budget for twenty-three. Uh, in April, on April twenty-third, the departments will provide their first quarter budget presentations, charge their twenty-three actuals to the VOCC. Um, I think, you know, in your packet, you have my presentation, but I don't think we need to go through a lot of those things, but some key points for you, um, is the departments also in your teams have, uh, submitted their quarterly memos in there, um, some highlights from that. You know, the Silver King, uh, will no longer be motel rooms, they'll be converted into apartments. Public health, as you know, we've appointed a new public health director, uh, Wick will be here two times a month, uh, sharing an office with the Nurse Family Partnership. Um, you know, staff celebrations, uh, Claire was awarded Rookie of the Year at the annual Colorado Emergency Manager Association Conference. And Angel from Community Justice was appointed to the Judicial Review Board of the State. Um, Library, PROS and Senior Center are engaging and paying attention to the city's community center project um, and ensuring that we're not duplicating services and resources. It is far too premature to discuss any kind of services, but, uh, those conversations are ongoing and staff from each of those departments are on the city's task force. Um, for the new adult wraparound program, um, it is off to a great start with a case number six. Um, uh, the, John has been doing a great job really helping those folks and it's an interesting model that even is a few months old, other counties are interested in. Um, on the IT front, from HR and from the assessor's office, um, we are exploring other software systems. Um, the HRIS, Human Resources Information System via Tyler, um, it's not the best system and neither is the, uh, the one that the assessor's office uses for Tyler. So we've, um, the assessor and, uh, HR director have been exploring other options of what can happen. Um, it's burdensome, um, to have an unresponsive, uh, technology company, um, plus an ineffective technology product. It took me most eighteen months to get the credit from Tyler, so it'll be eighteen months to get the credit from Tyler. But we'll have an in-person training that the, uh, the credit should cover most of, but not all of the cost. Um, so it's just not a really, it's not a good company, um, it's not designed for small governments. It's, you know, the city of Austin uses it and I'm sure the city of Austin, you know, has an army of Jesteras to, to handle it and deal with it.
Phase three.
Phase three.
Finals.
Yeah, um, and, uh, also from the assessor's office, you know, with the advertising that we did, um, we did have a, a larger than expected increase for exemptions for seniors and veterans. Um, and those are just some of the, the top line items, are there any questions from the board?
None for me. Um, I did have one quick question. There was, um, I see in, in your files, the reference to the, uh, city's, uh, convention center project to make sure the efforts aren't duplicated. And I had somebody ask yesterday about, um, the childcare effort in the feasibility study. Are you working with the childcare coalition to have representation from childcare sector on that committee for that piece of the work?
For the cities or for the counties?
For the counties, cause, um, it was.
The PSA for the feasibility study got passed today, but that is in the scope of work.
Yes.
To really develop that and have a focus group, but I can make sure to mention that Brenna and Adam.
Yeah.
And Rochelle, that that partnership is available and ready and, and is wanted.
Yeah, um, I think there's just some conversation about like, we, we have to find a A facility if we want to have childcare in our community going forward because we know that the building that it currently is housed in is not applicable to longevity for childcare or to meet childcare needs. So just, um, what that looks like in partnership with that feasibility, so, um, and I would be happy to help connect somebody or whatever that looks like.
Brenna knows everybody and does all the things, um, but I will let her know that that bridge is out there.
Perfect, thank you. That was the only thing I had, so, sorry.
No, it's good, I, I had two questions, um, sorry, on the airport, are, is there, are we trying to get a company to do rental cars? Or is that like there, but the, but they just haven't actually like done it?
The airport used to do rental cars and it was very, very attractive and there's a desire, but it is just not happening. I don't know if you know this, but Level's a small town and we are not big business yet.
Um, yes.
Oh, okay.
No, I've tried to rent from there in the past when I consulted out of county. I was like, you, you have a website that says they're renting cars here, but they never are. Um, okay, um, and then the other, just to Tim is, it, and this is a useful level of detail for me and it's great to get these points. Is it time consumed, uh, is this like a pain in the butt for you or is this like pretty quick to pull together?
It's quick to pull together.
I mean, I don't wanna create, you know, time consuming, busy work, but for me, this works, I just don't wanna.
No, that, that's, you know, part of our AIP for onboarding and for new commissioners, right? Having that structure in place so that information is available when you need it. Um, it's timely and accurate, it's not a burden on department directors to do their quarterly memos. And then department directors let me and Les know for items that need to be on my monthly report out to the commissioners or if you have, you know, a question that you wanna ask of me in public, those kind of things, um, that's what.
Yeah, so the intention is to have these on the second meeting of each one.
Great.
Cool.
That's good, thanks, any?
No.
Questions, okay, cool. Then, um, if we take just like a quick break and then we'll come in for that last agenda item twelve on executive session.
That'd be great.
I have to be in here and you go into the session when we come in, right?
So how about, yeah, so why don't we open it and then you take a quick break before we get into the content of the executive session? That way Hunter can, he'll need to go to lunch.
Knew there was a reason we didn't usually do it in that order.
I'll move to, uh, go into executive session for the following purposes. A, to consider the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of real personal or other property pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six four oh two four A and to determine positions relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, develop a strategy for negotiations and or instruct negotiators pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six four oh two four E. And B, to hold a conference with the county attorney to receive legal advice on specific legal questions pursuant to CRS twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B.
So who, or second, sorry.
Um, and we'll have, uh, Bryce and Adam Bay from PROS and CPD and County Attorney Manager joining us. Anyone else? I think that's it.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, me too.
Vote.
Aye.
Aye, aye. We all voted yes.
Okay.
Um, well, if you guys wanna take a quick break, I'm gonna mute us and pause our video.
Yeah.
And then we'll work on logistics of getting whoever needs to get into the correct room in the correct room, is that okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, move to command of exec, executive session at two oh five.
I'll second.
Great, uh, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, out of executive session.
And Chris, can you just?
Yeah.
Certify, sorry.
Certified, yeah, there's no decisions ever made and if the content discussed was subject to attorney client privilege.
Thank you.
Okay, um, now I agree, just move right to the consent agenda.
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Great, no comment for me.
Nothing for me.
Thanks, call for vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, the consent agenda approval of March eighth, twenty twenty-four payroll is approved. It's enough, is it? We are adjourned at two oh six PM.
Woo, okay, thank you.